The normal procedure here is to get an overview of the budget. And Mr. Snow would do that. And then, you know, if we have specific questions, specific things to address, we'll take them one at a time. But I think the first thing to do is just get an overview of, you know, the highlights of the budget, changes, differences, similarities, and go from there.
Right. Well, once again, it's that time of year. So in the books that you have received, I want to point out three sections to you. Page four of the book gives us an all-fund summary. That's all departments consolidated. That gives you the look at everything going on in county government, all-fund activity. And then on page five, there is a similar schedule for the general fund. So it gives you just the general fund activity. Those are important if you want to see just really what county government is all about, both at the general fund level, which has all of our operating departments in it, for the most part, administrative operating, and most of the elected officials as well. And the, you know, you can digest that at will there. On page 164 of the budget, that's where the special fund activity starts for all the special funds that we have in county government. So that gives you, if you want to dog ear the page 164, that gets you past the general fund and into the special funds and the budget. So in the general fund, in 2025, we are again successful in achieving our goal that we've had for many, many, many years of winding up with a fund balance that's 10% or more of our general fund revenues. There is a caveat to that, that I think County Counselor might be speaking to toward the end here, having to do with the appeals court decision. Right now, we have $1.8 million of marijuana tax money incorporated into the general fund Generally, right now, we just found out about this today, and we need to assess our position and see what happens there. So we're not, didn't have time to make any adjustments there. But if we do make an adjustment, it will be sizable, and we'll have to be coming back to you for more discussion about that. Obviously, our budget is sales tax-driven. We don't have a general fund property tax. We only have two property taxes, one for dispatch, one for road and bridge. The, in the general fund, the general fund sales tax is about 62%, a little bit over 62% of our total revenues in the general fund. Those revenues, though, include inter-fund transfers from other county departments. So if you extract the inter-fund transfers from that number, sales tax is like 65% of our total operating budget.
Hey, Bob.
Yeah?
On 164, which is the sheet you mentioned, why is our interest income at 100,000, where is 2022 is 1.1, 2023 is 2.5? I just, did you see what I'm talking about here? On 164?
What is that?
Interest income.
Is that in what department or?
Other revenue.
Transportation from 164.
Yeah. Interest rates shot up, and one of my duties has been to invest surplus county monies in, we have seen a massive uptick, as you can see there, rise in interest revenue.
No, we're requesting 100,000.
Well, why don't we, can you hold off on that? Let me get to that, because we might be talking about two different things here. So let me get to that after we finish off, rather, with the overview, and then we can talk about specific things. When it comes to our sales tax growth, in 2023, we saw a 1% increase in sales tax over 2022. The fourth quarter was pretty disappointing, and of course, we have one more month to receive at this point in the way of information from the Missouri Department of Revenue that will allow us to see how we're doing for the year. Right now, we have nine months' worth of activity. We'll get the 10th month of activity in December, because there's a two-month lag. So when the budget is finally passed, we'll have 10 months' worth of activity here. But what we see so far this year is that we are 6.77% ahead in sales tax revenues over '23, which is good. But as I said earlier, the Christmas season and all of that activity in the fourth quarter really seems to vary from year to year as to what really happens.
You used to be pretty optimistic on that every year, right?
Well, we try to be optimistic about it, but last year, in the fourth quarter of 2023, our sales tax revenues dropped off appreciably from the prior year. So it's not a given that our sales tax revenues will go up. We're on a good, healthy trend, but what happened last year was, we took that trend that we were seeing in 2023, and we built on that as far as our estimate for 2023 sales tax revenues. What actually happened was, we wound up lower by, lower from our estimate by about 1.2, 1.3 million bucks. So we wound up with a shortfall in our sales tax revenue projections in 2023 that we've been making up with where we are to this point in the year with a 6.77% increase. So we're wait-and-see here. The final sales tax numbers for the year come in first couple of days of February. So we would have a report for you to just kind of let you know, because that's a number that everybody pays attention to, because 2/3 of our budget functionally is from sales On the personnel side of things, the council had set the direction a number of years ago about moving employees through the pay, their pay scales sooner, and that required a 2% increase, at least a 2% increase every year, in order to achieve that. County executives recommended budget is 3% COLA, 3% merit. That's toward the upper end of where local jurisdictions have gone this year with their cost of living raises. And so we're on the upper end of that, and it's given the fact that inflation is still around. Our employees appreciate that, but it also helps keep us competitive in the market. We've seen better results lately with hiring efforts because of the attention that we have provided to the pay scale and what salary levels are here in the county.
Hey, Bob, let me toss in that a couple of months ago, we started talking to the city administrators about where they were going, and everybody was predicting between 4.5 and 6.5%. So we're trying to stay even with the market, because our cities are some of our biggest competitors to seal our employee.
I want you to pull that microphone closer to you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so it shows in here 220 days to hire for an average position. Is that, do you know if that's wrong?
It depends on what department you're talking about. For some departments, that is not, but for departments that have chronically open positions like corrections, like parks, like highway, yes.
Okay. Here comes the.
Evil microphone.
Is that for me?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Tim.
You what?
Yeah, when you're talking that way, and I got my 73-year-old ears.
I got it.
They're going to be 74 next couple of weeks.
So when you look at the numbers in the personnel side of our budget, if you looked at the budget this year, roughly 47% of our budget is, I'm sorry, we have $137 million of our overall budget that's dedicated to personnel, personnel costs. I went back and I looked at 2022 to see where we were, actually, as far as actual numbers are concerned. In 2022, our overall personnel cost for all funds was $93 million. This year, it's $137 million.
And that's in two years.
So in three years.
Sorry?
In 2022, we had $93 million of salaries and personnel costs. In 2025's budget, we have $137 million. It's a 47% increase in personnel costs in three years. So we are putting our money where our mouths are here when it comes to saying that we're trying to do something about staying competitive. I don't think anybody can argue with that kind of increase. Now, granted, there have been new positions as well, but that's all part of personnel. In the general fund, the 2022 personnel costs were 66 million, and in this year's budget, it's 95 million dollars. So that's an increase of $44 million, or, I'm sorry, 44% in the general fund.
Hey, Bob.
Yeah?
During that same period, what would the, do we know what the national inflation rate was? We're at 43%.
No, I don't know offhand. For those three years, it's nowhere near 40%.
Nowhere near 40, that's my point.
No, we far outpaced inflation.
We're not just keeping up with inflation, we're hopefully moving ahead of it.
The Social Security increase was 8% in one year at its highest. I think it was like 3% the year before that, and it's like 3% or slightly under, again, for the coming year in 2025. So, you know, you're talking about, I think, an inflation factor, if you want to use that as the basis, of 15% or less over those three years. But certainly, there was a spike in the middle there that people have seen.
And let me remind you that the biggest part of that is in 2023, you know, as the council knows, you all proposed that we give people their full amount of time in service. So we had employees make massive changes, and we have over 1,200 full-time employees, many of whom were with us at the time. That then triggered a change in benefit levels that we had to pay out for Social Security and Medicare and all that. And on top of that, then, that made a trigger in loggers, which we had to pay the increase in loggers. So all told, a very large portion of that is actually related to that 2023 move forward, not 100% of it by any means.
Yeah. So that's kind of an overview of the personnel side of our budget. One other thing personnel-related is with the, with last week's election, we had a proposition on the ballot that also calls for an increase in the state minimum wage. And we'll feel that perhaps in the intermittent employee categories, our part-time employees. Don't know what that really looks like yet, but that's just another thing out there to bear in mind.
Well, we should be paying them at least 15 an hour.
The, our self-insurance fund is a fund that has had a lot of stress in recent years, where medical claims and healthcare costs just continue to rise, as you all know. And we are a self-insured plan, meaning that we pay the freight on any claims that are processed through our plan on the health, on the health insurance side.
17% to 18%.
There, again, this year was a special assessment, if you want to call it that, to some of the non-general fund departments that helped make up the difference that we needed to fund into the self-insurance fund. It wasn't a huge amount of money, but still, our normal funding formula that we use for funding this self-insurance fund for health insurance isn't quite getting there. So the shortage then comes from the other non-general revenue departments to get us back to even. So, but the health insurance fund, self-insurance fund for 2025 is fully funded. So hopefully, that stays that way. Parks is again very active. They have a large capital budget. They've got six major projects that are listed in their budget this year: Kinetic Park, Spring Bend, the Darden Blue Way Airport, NEC, and Oglesby Park. And those efforts continue, and along with the addition and expansion of our park system comes the need for personnel. And Parks has asked for six new positions that are incorporated into the current budget here. In the general fund, we had 17 new positions added to the budget, for a total of 23. So on the road board side, they've got $83 million that's incorporated into this budget for just the myriad of projects. If you look at Fund 205, you'll see a listing of the projects that they have, and it's just a very robust fund that is always out there doing projects in concert with the cities and as well as in the county. And without that tax and without that effort, we would be in a world of hurt. Highway Department has $17 million allocated to the resurfacing of county roads. And stormwater is a topic that has been popular lately. So in the ARPA budget that we've had, we have $2.5 million that was provided for in that fund. And we had Representative Christopher Nelli come up with an extra $2.5 million of matching funds. And we've been informed now that the state, because a lot of the stormwater money around the state has not been utilized, that we could have up to five, another $5 million worth of funding from the state.
When are we going to know if we get, have we applied for it?
John, you want to speak there?
Yeah, we've been working with DNR throughout the year and making them aware that we would get projects ready, because of the same ARPA deadline that we are by the end of the year, they need to have the funds obligated. And we've been told that we'll have 3.1 that they are confident they'll be able to provide us, and hopefully up to 5 million. So.
Have we identified what project?
Yeah. So the council, we talked last time about the watershed studies and then do an additional inspection of our lines. So those two major buckets that the council kind of seemed to indicate was important to know what the state of our current system is. So it'd be inspecting the remainder of the system and four additional watersheds.
So you're expecting possibility at least 3.1 up to 5, but that's not on top of the 2.5. That's to bring the 2.5 to 3.1 or 5 from the state.
That's an addition.
That is an addition. Okay.
We add almost $12 million to the grant for more improvements in this coming budget if we get the additional buy.
Beautiful.
Major investment into that structure, knowing where we're at and giving the public a piece of that in good condition.
Right. So, good news on that.
Thanks to our folks in Jeff City.
So good news on that front. My final piece of the budget, just for an ARPA update for you, we've been going on for a number of years with that. We were out of the box pretty early on getting our funds obligated and put into motion. I know across the river, they've had some challenges, and I'm sure they'll probably get it fixed before the end of the year. But December 31, as John mentioned, is the deadline for obligating ARPA funding, to have it either people hired or money under contract or committed to be spent. And we have 2025 and 2026 then to spend that money down completely. It's kind of like CARES Act, for those of you that were around during CARES, where we had to spend the money by December 31, and then at the last minute, they gave us another 90 days. We had the jail project going on that was a real interesting project, given the timelines that we were under. But here, we'll have two years to spend down the remainder of the money, but it all has to be under contract and obligated by December 31. And it basically is, if we wind up in a situation where some line item in ARPA winds up under budget for some reason, the jail project that's eligible for ARPA funding is over budget. So, go figure. So we have a fallback position already in place that we could move those unobligated funds over to the jail project, lower our capital project side of the cost, and not lose any ARPA funding by the time the project closes. So the thing that I mentioned earlier was about the Court of Appeals. I don't know if the acting county counselor wanted to say anything more about that at this point, or?
I think that the only real thing to note is that the county plans to appeal the decision that was handed down today. So we are preparing the appeal paperwork as we speak.
If you have other questions, you know, we could do a closed session on litigation, or, you know, talk to us individually.
The appeal would be to the Supreme Court?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, it would have to go to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court doesn't have to take it. There's another case going on on the other side of the state right now. If that one comes back the other way, I guarantee you they would probably take it. If they come back the same, I'm not sure. I don't know, Judge, you may have a better opinion on our chances.
They'll avoid it if they can.
Huh?
They'll avoid it if they can.
Well, we certainly don't agree with the decision by the Court of Appeals, but we have to live with that. And this whole thing, and what I've been telling some media people that called, is this is why it's, putting this stuff in the Constitution is just not a good idea. Again, all these initiative petitions, and they're putting it in the Constitution. If this was a statute that the people had approved, you know, and this was an issue, we wouldn't have to go to the Supreme Court. We could simply go to Jeff City and try to work something out. And you might have to compromise, and we may only get half of what we want, but whatever. But there, you know, the way it is now, we go to Jeff City, it's all they can do is put it back on the ballot and clarify it. And what's frustrating is that the, this was written by the industry. And there's no, you know, if they wanted, if they wanted us not to have the ability to do this tax, they could have written that very clearly, and nobody would have, nobody would have, you know, they get to write it, all right? But the fact that they didn't write it meant that a lot of us read it and thought, oh, sure, we'll be able to. And like I've been saying all along, I don't think anybody voted for that marijuana thing thinking the state's going to be better off if people smoke more marijuana. They voted for it because people are smoking it already, and, you know, why shouldn't they be taxed like we are when we use alcohol or tobacco or whatever? So stay tuned.
So with that money, does it just stay in the bank account until this gets decided? And then what do you do with the money that's already been collected to this point if they, if Supreme Court either doesn't?
I think the only thing that I would say right now is that the court's order today said nothing about monies that were collected previously. It enjoined the future collection, so I don't think that anything needs to be said about that at this moment.
I was starting to say, I wouldn't know how you would refund that money.
Good one.
Yeah.
It would be out of our hide. Basically, we'd have to pay it out of our fund balance if we had to pay it back.
Yeah, who would you pay it to?
That would be the question. Would you refund it?
Everybody that says, "I've smoked a joint," and I went, "Dah."
If the state were to say, "Give us the money back," and they allocated it, I don't know. It's just, it's, it's hard to say, and we'll know more as time goes on here, but for the present time, the $1.8 million item is there, and we'll assess things before the closure of the budget process so that you will.
So have we stopped, are we going to stop collecting as of tomorrow, or we're just going to, let it keep rolling?
It's not us that's collecting, it's the state.
For what?
It's the Department of Revenue. You submit your sales tax notices to them, they handle that.
Well, they're going to keep collecting it, right, until a final decision, or no?
We don't know. That may require a stay. All that's getting looked at.
Yeah. What are other states doing? I mean, other states like Colorado or Indiana?
I don't know. I, you know, that's been around for a long time. I don't know of any other general tax in St. Charles County that, speaking for us, where there's been a stacking issue, you know, any tax that gets, any one of our sales taxes. The cities get their sales tax, we get our sales tax, and life goes on. There's never been a split and classification difference there. So we'll just have to see how it plays out and go from there.
Is anyone done with that topic?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So question, getting into the airport fund, there's a lot of missing data from, there's 22, so this is on page 387, and there's just nothing for '23, '24, '25 or anything. I just wanted clarification with all the airport fund.
When the airport was moved under the Parks Department?
Oh, yeah.
Those line items were moved underneath the Parks budget.
All right, so these are just being, just a placeholder that's there for when they were their own entity?
No, it's reflecting that they used to be there, but the budget hasn't run out enough that we're no longer showing those. Those were the old funds that they used. Now it's in the Parks fund.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's, from the time, the blanks are from when it was put into the parks.
That works. All right, I had a question over on page 221, the Parks Department. Looking at Parks Department, on average, they're asking for about 10 more employees, especially at the NEC. And I looked at what the recommendation was versus the request, and I just wanted some clarification or discussion on that.
They were awarded, in the budget that's in front of you, you see the requested positions, but the final budget column is still blank. Seven, I'm sorry, six employees were approved. I don't have the, let's see, what do I have here on that? And park maintenance workers, twos, there were five, and one facility manager were, are in that approved budget of the requested positions that they initially made with their original submission.
Okay, but still, if my math is not adding up on that, when we're looking at the request numbers, at 94, the recommended is at 81, so that's 13. And then we jump over to the NEC section of what they're requesting. Obviously, with the NEC being new, I'm assuming there's going to be other issues that are going to be arriving. With the NEC, the executive ended up at 14.8 from the 9.8 that was there. I was just, I know we're moving people from one department to other departments.
Yeah, so they traded in some positions that they weren't filling, that they didn't feel were appropriate to the facility anymore.
Okay.
And so that's part of it, and they asked for these positions instead. And then they asked for two entirely new of those parks maintenance worker twos, and that the other three were trades. They also, you know, you referenced the number of positions they asked for, but when, even if there's a special funding source, we look for the departments to actually make a case for what they asked for. And a number of the positions that Parks has asked for relate to openings that may not occur till '26 or very late in '25. And so if, when those happen, we'll obviously get closer and we'll look again. so, if, when those happen, we'll obviously get closer and we'll look again.
That's one of my fears, is with all these new parks, Kinetic Park in particular, being a Parks guy, when it's not staffed properly and the public shows up and notices that, that's when we have probably more complaints than anything else, because they're expecting a great experience and they're not receiving it. And I just want to make sure we're staffed up 100% on Parks and we don't have to worry about it. So, that's why I just want to bring that to the attention.
Yep.
Before you jump into your next thing, can I bring up one last thing about the budget generally?
Go for it.
Sorry about that. So, the other thing I would note to you, as you go through the departments, you'll notice a lot of title changes. HR spent virtually the entire year during this year looking at the issue of what jobs are associated with each other to try to give our employees a career path if they didn't want to leave the county, but they weren't interested in just sitting in the same job or the same department forever. And so, they've associated a lot of these. They also found in doing that, that we had a lot of jobs under the same title, you know, Government Service Representative, that the jobs were not similar at all, and they actually did deserve their own job description so the departments could better recruit. So, there's a lot of title changes in here, and that's all it is, is title changes. But it's because they're associating those jobs to say to people, well, if you're doing this kind of job, did you know three other departments use similar skills in these jobs, so that they could show them that there is a way to stay here if they want to stay here, and we can use that expertise? So, that's why you're seeing all that.
Yeah, so a lot went from two to now called senior. Is that correct?
Yes. So, some of the departments didn't like the one-two thing, because a lot of it had to do with just their seniority in the role. So, you know, they learn a certain amount of skill in that. They can mentor others, so they ask for some various job titles. All the department heads were consulted before any title changes were made. You said, no, I don't like that, don't want to change. We worked out a way to accommodate that. So, you know, they were working with all the departments.
If I may continue. So, on animal control, they asked for another officer, and we're looking at staying at six. I know one of the issues I've had out in District One has been a lot of animal control issues, and I just wanted to know what the discussion on that was.
Well, to some extent, budget limited. But the number one thing that we found that they're having a problem with is surrenders due to behavior. And so, the position that we prioritized, that they made the best case for, was to bring in an annual animal behavioral training person who can work with dogs that otherwise might have to be seized because they're starting to pose a danger. Takes a lot of manpower to seize a dog and to basically make the determination that it's got to be put down. So, that was what we prioritized.
Great answer. Like that. All right. And then the last I had, it looks like the collector... I got confused going through all of it. Are they losing two positions in the collector's office, or what's happening there?
No, they're gaining two. The collector asked for two additional Government Service Representatives, too. She made the case that this will allow her to have more permanent people for the senior citizen tax, and that when she's not in that season, she'll be able to use those people with her general work that's seasonal. And so, we gave her that. We decreased the additional overtime that we had been giving her a little bit to reflect that. She said she'd be able to use these people to take away some of that. And so, it is an addition of two for her budget.
And now, do they reclassify that? Because I had it down to C1 Government Services Representative Three. Is that one that got changed over?
Yes. And it's going to be, she wanted to keep the 123, or the 23, I don't think she has ones. But, so, we gave them to these two new people as Government Service Representatives Three.
Okay. And that's where, what you explained earlier, some departments wanting to go to a senior versus a two or three.
Right. And she did not want to do that.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Any chance that we may be able to get some sort of a summary from Samantha about things that she changed?
Sure. Absolutely.
It may be easier to be able to follow the bouncing ball, so to speak.
Okay.
They have a big old spreadsheet.
Yeah, I just have one other general question, just for pure clarification. The deferred compensation match, can you explain that to me in basic, what is that?
Okay. So, we have, we have two, for the lack of a better term, two different forms of like a 401K that everybody's aware of, right? So, the 457B plan is our equivalent to the 401K, where an employee can elect to have 5% of their pay go tax-deferred into a 457 plan, which is just like an IRA. Like 401K, you can put it into any investment you want through the nationwide portfolio. So, you have that money, say 5%, that you've put in, out of your pay for that. The county then has a matching program that for new county employees up until this year, up until 2025, when a new employee got hired, they can go into the 457 plan, and if they were, putting in 5% of their pay. The county will match the first 3% of what they put in on their own dime, and they will put additional money in, but that's in a 401 plan, okay? It's a separate plan because it's county-funded, not the employees' money. So, we give new employees, and employees who have been here up to five years, I think it is, three, the first 3% of what they put in on their dime, we match that 3%. So, it's a matching program. What we've done is we've bumped up the percentages of county match. So, 3% is going up to 3.25%. And then, there's a 3.25% that it goes up by a half, by a quarter. And so, basically, we're starting the minimum now at 3.5%, not 3%. And we're, we have a maximum county match of 4.25% instead of 4% now. So, we're funding that extra quarter percent that employees are putting into their paychecks on their own.
So, the difference between the two, the 457, when you retire, you can start drawing on that. You don't have to wait till 59.5. And that's a key.
I don't know of that provision, but you're speaking from experience.
Yeah.
Yeah. If that's what they did, I'll take your word for that one.
It's just different than what we have within my field, so that's where I was a little confused about.
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have. Tim, is your pick?
Yeah.
You're back to...
I'm starting from the beginning.
Well, let me, let me just correct one thing. I misspoke when I said that the special fund started on 164, page 164. They actually start on 149. But, go ahead, Tim.
Quick question. I noticed in the recorder of deeds and the collector, we did not increase the salary of both the elected officials. Why is that? I mean, don't they get the raise too?
They don't get the raise, the raise accrues every year in the Personnel Administration Plan. So, you'll see a higher amount in the '25 budget for the elected officers. But we can't pay that.
It's the same as 2024.
Correct, because they can't get a pay raise during the course of their term. They get the new, if they get reelected at the end of their term, the accrued increases that have occurred over the previous four years are the new salary level when they are sworn in for their new term. But their salary levels have to remain constant through...
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right through the term.
Who puts together our budget, the council budget? Is that...
It's usually the chair.
Yeah, usually, I mean, usually they run things by me.
Did you put this together?
It's basically kind of the same as last year. You know, I didn't, I don't think there was any changes made.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking at the council member expenses. We put in $17,500. Had we ever come close to that?
No. If you look at the actual...
That's what I'm saying. We have $7,000.
What page, Tim?
I'm sorry, 51. Okay. And I know, I think there's been some discussion of coffee and water and stuff like that in our office. We haven't been getting, could we use some of this, could we move some of that to office supplies? I mean, we've got this excess budget for council member expenses, and it just seems like it's a lot excessive.
Well, I know that in the administrative departments that are under the authority of the county executive, we don't allow that.
You don't do that?
So, I mean, if you all, I mean, if, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if that's up to you all, if that's the direction you want to go.
It just seems like, I thought you guys got your own, you know, they don't furnish you with water and coffee and all that stuff?
In the executive's office, yes, that does happen.
Not in my world. In the national world, we don't get anything.
But we don't in the exec, in the council.
Well, that's your decision. So, as it is the executive's decision.
Right.
What's that?
So, buy some, bring it by.
We can certainly adjust that if that's...
Well, that would be much...
You've got a line item there already that, you know...
Yeah, I know. Sure, that's enough. I don't know. We have a line item with excessive... Also, let's see.
Is the council member expenses of 17,500, is that divided by eight, by seven, or how's that work?
25.
Joe, what you've done traditionally is you have in an ordinance that a council member can spend up to $5,000. But because we were just holding that at $35,000 for years and years and years, about 10 years ago, I'm going to guess, you guys said just split it in half because nobody, you had like two council members.
I think it was when Croden was chair, is when we went to, yeah.
Right, 2,500 per.
We went to 2,500 per. And it was, that's what got budgeted. But if you still had the access to 5,000, so if a council member spent over that 2,500, they could go up to their 5,000. It just wasn't budgeted out that way, because we, to your point, we weren't coming close to the 35 grand. So, we were budgeting it, and we were never spending it. And we found that the 17,5 was a number that everybody felt comfortable with at the time.
That's fair. I mean, it's just, we're not getting close to it. But let me ask Claire, do, does, do we pay for water and coffee or things that you guys, we do?
Yeah, on a petty cash.
We do it on a petty cash?
Well, it comes out of council member expenses.
Okay, so...
Or actually office supplies.
We have an office supply.
Right, I see that. I just, yeah, okay. And that's adequate, I assume?
Yes, has been up to now, yes.
On page 152 of Road and Bridge, we no longer are showing interest income?
So, it's not in here. In other places it is. As you can see, the 23 interest was $122,000.
And nothing since?
Yeah. I mean, that was just the way the department submitted it. You don't really know what that number is going to be, interest income from year to year. You can budget. But we're now in a, in a position where rates are starting to fall. So, we're going to be falling off of this. Number 23 and 24.
We're showing zero, though.
Yes, I know. I see that. And, I mean, you can, you can put that money in there if you, if, you know, I don't know why John elected not to put it in there.
Should we be putting $125,000 in that category?
You could. I mean, it's...
Well, I mean, I could. I mean, could I put 3 million? I mean, what?
Well, we don't know what our, what our interest really is until the end of the year. But I will tell you that it's probably pretty close to what it was in 23.
All right. So, if we added that number in here, let's just say $125,000, that would give us another $125,000 revenue here?
It gave you the revenue. Are you, you going to change an appropriation somewhere? I mean, that, I mean, it doesn't really do any good. It would fall to fund balance if, you know...
I don't understand what that, what that means. But, so, if we're not showing a revenue of $125,000, you're saying I have to offset it by reducing...
No. If you, if you just put the line item in there, some amount of money, it will fall to the fund balance that's at the beginning of the department. Fund balance is what money they have left over at the end of the year, unless you've got a specific area where you want to say, okay, let's take $100,000, put it in here, and let's spend it somewhere in the budget.
I just want to make sure we're counting everything. I mean...
Oh, we are.
We've taken the time to show all these accounts where money's coming in, and it just seems like we're not showing it there.
The, the interest income is always accounted for once the year closes. So, that's why 23 is in here and 24 isn't.
But 22, we, we had an actual, 23, we had an actual, 24, we don't...
24 is not over yet, so we don't have an actual. We could do an estimated, we could do it, we could do an estimate. But unless you have a specific need that you want to budget against it, you put the line item in here and, and, you know, if you, it falls just to the money that's left over at the end of the 2025 budget.
So, we're just keeping it simple down. So, trying to estimate.
You know, yeah, I mean...
It seems like there should be a hundred, some number in that 2024 estimate that...
No, I can give you a number. If the council, it's not my budget.
Road and Bridge.
Right. So, you know, if the council wants a line item in there, then I can put, I can put a $100,000 estimate in there for 24, and a $100,000, and probably, I'd say, a $75,000 estimate in there for 25. But it doesn't accomplish anything unless you're going to say, I want that 175 appropriated somewhere, you know, where you need it in the expenditure side. Otherwise, it falls to fund balance. It always catches up.
And the fund balance on this fund is on page 149. So, it increased the fund balance from $1,009,460 to...
Wait, where, where are you at?
149.
149, yeah.
You, you, okay. Say that again, Joe.
It would increase that bottom line number.
Page number 149.
The, in the 24 estimate, see, because we didn't have, we didn't have interest income budgeted in 2024 this year. So, we would have an estimate into 2024 estimate column for, say, $100,000 bucks, and then another $75,000 or so in 2025's executive recommend budget. But...
So, I guess my question is, are we getting, are we getting interest income that's just not shown in here?
Yes.
Then why aren't we showing it, I guess?
Because we wait till the end of the year as a natural, right?
We're showing it at the, we're showing it at the end of the year.
Right?
Yeah.
I agree.
I mean...
Because it should be tracked.
Yeah. But there's no way to know what it is till the year's over.
There's no way to know when anything...
But it, but it should be, it's a budget. It's not, it's a budget. It's an estimate budget. So, you got to have something in there so you don't have a void.
That's why I say, if you want to make a provision for this as part of your approval of the budget, then, you know, I can tell you that an estimate for 2024 will be $100,000. That's going to, that could be a little low, but...
$100,000.
Just put that in there, yeah. If that's what you think it is.
All right. So, then, are you saying that if, to do that, we need to appropriate? Because I, I mean...
No, you don't.
No, it's just a budget. No, just...
Well, okay.
So, if it's in there, I mean, it's just, it's better to have a number in there so you can follow it through.
I mean, I see a lot of estimates, and I don't, okay. What's the sale of capital and assets? Are we selling something?
At the end of, end of life, when, for example, well, it could be trucks, vehicles, heavy equipment. You know, we, we generally will, depending on the equipment and the condition that it's in, and the type of equipment that it is, sometimes there's a market for it, sometimes there's not. In cases where we trade it in, John Lyons will assess at the beginning of that process. So, given this equipment and given its history, is it better for us to sell it? Like when we have our fleet sail down at the arena all the time, we've sold highway department vehicles there. Or, given the condition, and it's not as good to sell it privately, so let's trade it into the dealer. That decision is made every time he takes a piece of equipment and disposes of it. What's the better way to go? Do we stand to make more on the deal by selling it outright or by trading it in? Do we stand to make more on the deal by selling it outright or by trading it in? So when we, when we sell them outright, that's what the sale of capital assets is.
Okay. On page one fifty-eight, professional services, we went from twelve thousand, eight thousand to two hundred and seventy-four thousand. On page one fifty-eight, professional services, under operating in the second line, we went from twelve thousand in twenty-twenty-three to two hundred and seventy-four thousand this year.
That's the Cinnamon Hills watershed study.
That's the watershed study?
That's the watershed study, or Cinnamon Hills will cost two hundred and seventy-three thousand and some change.
Okay, but that's, I mean, I thought, I thought earlier you were saying, wasn't that coming out of?
So, revenue, the project, on page one fifty-two, state revenues, nine two oh one thirty-three four hundred, we got seven point five million in state revenue coming into the budget.
Yeah.
That two seventy, that two seventy-four for the watershed study will be one of those items that would be reimbursed out of those state revenues.
Okay.
As well as the storm, sort of replacement line of that eight million seven seventy-one.
Okay.
Four sixty-nine, that's, that's all part of those reimbursements that we're expecting. There's also included there, part of the vehicle replacement line, then, just like under the two oh one, nine eighty twenty forty-seven four twenty, does include one of the vehicles that need parts or buying, I think it's the?
Combo truck.
Right.
The vacuum truck, yep.
How about that line? But that also is part of our reimbursement.
Okay. On, I'm sorry, is anybody else? Okay, page one sixty-one, under capital outlay, road and bridge projects, we went from sixty-five thousand to four hundred thousand. Is there something identified in there that's different or that's unique?
I'm sorry, we're trying to stay up with you, can you say that one more time?
On page one fifty, oh, I'm sorry, one sixty-one.
Got that.
Under capital outlay, road and bridge projects.
Going from sixty-five thousand to four hundred thousand? Was originally appropriated in twenty-twenty-four and was delayed, and it's being re-appropriated in twenty-twenty-four.
And what does that include? Well, which, is it particular road, I mean, are we identifying particular projects?
Or is that a provisional allowance for when the need arises? Because there was no actual in twenty-twenty-two, sixty-five thousand dollars in twenty-three actual. And then in twenty-four and twenty-five, we have four hundred thousand dollars budgeted in that line item. It looks like it's just a provisional line item for some emergency project that arises that they need some funding for.
Glad you brought that up, because I have an emergency project. We have a street in our, in my district, that's, it's gravel. I mean, these people pay taxes, they, they, it's a subdivision street, but it's gravel. And I really think we need to overlay it.
Public road?
I think that money could come out of here.
Public road?
Kick a Shaw road, yeah.
Is it public?
Yes, sir.
I got a lot of gravel roads.
I don't worry about yours.
We like gravel roads.
You like them, these folks don't. What I would like to do is add a line item for that, that specific, out of that four hundred thousand that we didn't use last year, that we still now have this year for the kick a Shaw overlay.
What's the line, what is the budget, you got one?
I don't have a budget, but it's not four hundred thousand dollars, I can guarantee you that.
Wouldn't that go to road board first?
No.
No, it's.
That's arterial roads, this is a subdivision.
It'd be a highway department.
I have no idea where this road is, so.
If, if you, you, for example, Cox Hill Road.
What's the name of the street?
Kick a Shaw.
Is it a country road or something?
No. Not really, I mean, there, there's some lots there with probably maybe a half acre.
It's not private subdivision?
No. If it was private, I wouldn't be asking for it. And it's, it's gravel, and it, people park on this because it looks like a parking lot. And it's, I think it's going to be, it's a problem under, and I don't even think we, we plowed this street for snow. And, and there's no difference between their subdivision street than ours. It's just that, it's not, it's, it's public, it's, it's gravel.
Well, I'd, I'd recommend that, John, if you, if you can gather the information from the highway department on this street.
I think you're familiar with it, aren't you, John?
Yeah, I think John Lyons has replied to an email on Kick a Shaw. And it's, I think we did determine that, I gotta recall, but back on this tip, I believe, we did determine that was at Pollock Street.
Yep.
Because that was the initial caution.
There's a public street, and there's a paper street at the end of it, but the paper street's in a common ground area, so nothing needs to be done there, obviously, because, and there's people park on the street. It's a, it's a two-lane, barely a two-lane, I mean, you'd probably have to, but still, this is, you drive around in a, in a subdivision, you're, you're shocked when you come up, and when I came up, but I thought for sure it's a private street.
Well, get a budget for it, Tammy, that's.
Well, I, I sound like, I mean, okay, four hundred thousand, that's, that's my budget.
With all due respect, why don't you work with John and, and work that out?
Isn't that what this is for?
No, this is for going through the budget process of what we have and seeing what we're going to. It's not to go spend money that's in an emergency fund during the budget meeting. You can, you've still got some work to figure that part out before we come back.
Okay.
There's nothing to approve right now, because you have no idea how much that road's going to cost.
Yeah.
So just saying, perhaps you guys can work that out, and then we can take that up afterward.
I, John, would you be, I'd be happy to meet with you and John to go over it, because that, that'll save me some, us some time then, because there's a lot of new things in here.
Well, yeah, this is, this is a placeholder for, for projects, and, you know, I would say.
They have to do something.
Get it, yeah, it, there's money in the budget. So you would go through the process of scoping out the project, getting bids for it, unless the county's going to do it themselves, which I doubt. So that would be the appropriate thing to do there.
Okay.
Next.
Next, on page one sixty-four, under transportation fund revenue.
Right.
I mean, we estimated two point seven in twenty-twenty-four, we're estimating a hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-five.
Right, we estimated, it's been estimated at a hundred thousand, that's the departmental preference here. Same thing kind of is what we just talked about, conversation before last here. The, the, the fund balance of the transportation department is, is quite rich. It's got eighty-three million dollars to program for twen, potentially to program for twenty-twenty-five. So in this case, we have done the same thing, and that is, we have actually budgeted the actual interest revenue the year after we know it. So, same thing there.
I just, I guess, when I put together budgets, I figure out what I think it's going to be, and I put that line item in there, and I try to be conservative, low.
If they needed it, we would have had it in there.
Okay, well.
But they have fun, they have plenty of fund balance. Well, that's up to the road board to spend it.
Yeah.
And, and, so, as far as the, the need at this point, they don't have it. If things tightened up really bad in the transportation department, you bet we'd have it in there. But we just, for, for convenience sake, have left it to the following year when we know what it is.
All right. Well, I'll deal, I'll, I'll meet with John before our next meeting, so I can save us a lot of time. Thank you. Anywhere else?
I, I'm sorry, I missed, I've been out of town, I've been busy, but I, I don't know if you guys talked about this, but I would like to talk about it at the next meeting, if we have one, or sometime. That we had a lot of departments that were not filled in positions, but the, all the payrolls were funded. Where did that money go to? Does that get carried on the next year? Does it show that transfer over?
Yes, right.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And then the next question is, I'd like to, we talked about this at a meeting, but we're still low on police department and other departments, highways. I know we talked about a strategy, but I don't think it's necessarily, necessarily two, three hundred thousand dollar pay study. I think that we can just take the average of what other organizations are paying or whatever. I'm not saying we're low, but there's got to be a reason why we're understaffed. And from what I understand, we're sixteen down on the police department, is that right, Joanne?
Sixteen down in the police department?
No.
Well, because we funded, because we added for more.
We just added.
Yeah, but we didn't fill them, that's what technically we're sixteen down.
Well, we haven't had time to fill them, but.
I understand, but I'm just giving you the numbers where we're at. So, what, what I'd like to know, ten?
Keep saying we're down to ten.
Did we just pick up six?
We just added a position for the point four, but that puts us down, we had five of these, and then we just got five more positions.
So, on some of the things we need to discuss is pensions, are they equivalent? The age, tough like that, are we, are we in a, we just lost a guy to another department because of pension issues? And so, and I'm not saying the way offers bad, but I think it's important to be competitive, because we don't want to be a training ground for all these different departments, and I feel that that's what we're doing. So if we can be competitive with pensions, insurance, wages, all that stuff, it would be very helpful to our county. Because I know we're understaffed in the highway department, we can't even cut the weeds. And so, and that's a problem in rural areas. And so, that was what I heard, you know, so.
So in the police department, we are highly competitive. Now, that's not to say, because St. Louis County is under union negotiations right now, that they may not come in and cream us on law enforcement. Who knows what's going to happen until they finish their union negotiation. But our insurance is highly competitive, our pay is some of the best in the entire region.
But the top out, the top out's different from other departments.
That's true.
We're topping out late, a lot later than the other departments, and that's why we're losing people, from what I understand. So, and I'm, if I'm wrong, you can tell me, but.
Departments are all over the place on that, from fifteen years to twelve years to, you can go to Front Deck or Ladue and top out, I think in three or five. Yeah, so it's just.
I don't, Joanne, I'm not saying ours is wrong, I just think it's worth it, for a healthy conversation.
But Joe, you have to look at the whole package. And that's why when we did the union negotiations, we laid out the whole package to them. The, the fact that we have the, the double retirement system with both loggers and the four oh one, we have the take-home car program, we give them one year for every two, if they're coming in for another department, so that they don't start at the bottom. We have a lot more incoming from departments than we have outgoing. I'm looking at the chief to see if anything's changed, but I cannot say at this point, subject to whatever St. Louis County's negotiations do to us, that we are not amongst the best compensation packages out there.
Okay, so, do we pay for the academy, do we, do you get to pay for the trainee and then, and then get a contract with them if we, for a term? Okay, okay. I just, yeah, we just got to figure out a way to boost it up somehow. And even if we're more than competitive, that would be good, to make it a little bit better.
We want to be more than competitive, we want to be amongst the very best payers out there.
I feel like someone has something to say.
Oh, sorry, Brian. I've got a little insight into this, so.
I had a feeling you might.
I, I can say, coming from the other side of the river where I spent twenty-eight years, and I know the chief very well, we worked together for a lot of years, he stole more from St. Louis County than vice versa. So what you're dealing with here in law enforcement is an industry-wide problem. It's not a problem unique to St. Louis, it's not a problem unique to St. Charles County. So you do need to stay competitive, you need to do everything that you said. And coming over here and taking a fresh look at it compared to what I'm used to seeing, Joanne's a hundred percent right. It's, it's more than competitive, it's among the best in the region. That being said, there's only so many people that want to be police officers right now, so that's the issue. The issue is recruiting people to do the job, not necessarily stealing from each other, because you get into an arms race that you're never going to win. Because you end up chasing St. Louis County who's chasing us, and then we have to chase them back, and it just gets more and more expensive, and you're competing for the same talent pool. You need to expand that talent pool, that's the only way to fill your ranks, and I think the chief would agree.
County executive?
Mayor Jones accused us of poaching.
And if we are, that's okay.
Yeah, I was poaching her, good, her good folks and all that. And talked to chief about it, and we actually do college visits to try to recruit, but we don't do any in the St. Louis region. We go to Champaign-Urbana, we go to Springfield, we go to Columbia. So if, if we're poaching, or people are coming out here, it's because they want to, not because we're recruiting them.
I would add to that, to what I heard the chief say before, while the mayor made that implication, that the chief has not gone recruiting at other departments, but if other officers from other departments come knocking on his door, he is not going to turn down a well-qualified, good-fit officer. So I would, would take issue with, we are not stealing from anyone, but if someone from another, and I know that's not what you meant. If someone from another department finds a grass greener working for St. Charles County, we're more than welcome to talk to them, is that fair to say?
And I don't know how many times I called the chief and accused him of stealing, because.
So did the mayor, it's an open meeting.
Their benefit was my problem, because it was an opening that I had to worry about filling. But I will say one final thing, you know, one of the benefits of, of our organization here is St. Charles County itself. That's what sells people to come. So you can recruit across the nation by touting what we offer here that they don't have wherever they are. And it's a sense of community, it's a sense of all the things that we know that maybe somebody doesn't. That's what, that's what you need to target. So keep everything else competitive, do what we're doing, but really focus on that, because that's really where agencies have been successful filling their ranks. You know, Aurora, Colorado, and places like that.
All right, I believe that we are, have reached a point, next, at next meeting, we will, you know, continue the discussion, probably be, maybe a little bit shorter, and if anybody has anything at that point, you know.
Well, I would just ask that, if, if any of you have questions about anything that you would like to, to talk about, give us a holler, because it, it might just be a very quick thing that we can resolve, might be a little more efficient at the next meeting. But let us know if you have something ahead of time, and we'll have the best answer to, to give you back rather than spur of the moment.
I think there's two, two department heads that I would like to talk to about the budget, and that's community development, specifically neighborhood preservation, and then parks, so. I think about some items in there.
I would also, on top of what Dave said, is I'd like to, we've always invited in all the elected officials to, you know, go over the budget with us on what they may, may not got or want or whatever. And do we want to, I don't know, I know the directors work under the administration, but do we ask them any questions, how's community development, are they understaffed? I know they, they're understaffed too. And so, I just still, you know, want to know what we're doing.
Corrections, you mentioned corrections?
Corrections is terribly understaffed, yeah, and so we've just got, got to deal with some of this stuff. And, you know, it just, to say it's, it's a competitive market, I get it, but, but Corrections has been as understaffed as it is and having some of the issues, we just got to come up with a better solution. Because you're working these guys at a bone, and they're going to quit.
Well, my suggestion is, anyone that would like to have, you know, elected official come to our next budget session, certainly let me know, and then we'll, we'll get the request out to them, and, you know, if they.
No, I think you could just invite them if they want to come, I don't, I don't know, I don't have, yeah, so if they, if they want to come, and.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you've done that in the past, just open invitation, but, but you don't want twelve people showing up for one meeting, so. Balance it out, and just let us know who it is that you're, you're having to, to appear.
Okay. Okay, we are.
Thank you.
For this work session.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Bob. Yes, thank you, Bob. Let's, let's put the papers down here.